We'll make a start, it is Tuesday the 9th of January 2024. Happy New Year. That would be the first and last time. We are the first committee of the New Year, so that gives me a right to say that, I suppose. We'll make a start, 551, does anybody have any declarations of any disposable community interests, please? None, thank you. 552, I know we have some apologies for absence, Karen.
councillor Evans.
Thank you. Minutes from the amenities committee meeting held on the 5th of December. They haven't been to full council because we don't have one in December, so hopefully you've all read them. And need to be absolutely certain that they are correct. Everyone content?
Yes.
Agreed. 554, town team managers' report, welcome Nick.
Okay, thank you.
For your report.
Yeah. So during the month of December and into January, the town team have been carrying out a range of tasks. This has included maintenance and cleaning, checking the town's street furniture, playparks, public toilets, allotment sites, open spaces and cemetery, as well as all buildings and assets owned by the town council. We've also been working alongside and reporting any issues under Breckland and Norfolk County Council and highways ownerships to help improve the town. The town team continue to receive verbal complaints again from the public regarding the underpasses in and around Fethford. The town team recently visited the minister gate, Glebe Close and Croxton Road underpasses, working alongside Breckland and Serco, these clean and free from graffiti. We continue again to contact Norfolk highways to stress to them that these assets are their responsibility and they have an obligation to maintain them. We've also asked that they show some support to both councils going forward and to work alongside us with the owned assets in and around the town. Street lighting, so Amy Norfolk street liner has recently been contacted in regards to street lights not working in and around the town. They've confirmed that all units which have been reported will be checked and repaired or replaced where needed going forward. They also urge councillors and public to report any faulty lighting not currently operational. Loose paving slabs, so the reports have recently been submitted to highways regarding loose paving slabs within the King Street pedestrianised areas. And they're currently looking into those. Grit bins, the town team have recently been working hard on checking all the winter grit bins and the locations. Replacing any existing bins that have sadly degraded over the years. We've also chased up Norfolk highways to make sure that the bins are covered on their gritting schedules for refilling during the bad weather should it approach. Street furniture, so the town team have continued to clean and wash and remove graffiti from the town's street furniture, playparts, notice boards as part of their regular ongoing cleaning schedules. And they've also been working on making a list of all the litter bins and dog waste bins that need replacement or repairs going forward. These will be scheduled in between the town council and Breckland in identifying the ones under different ownerships of responsibility. We continue to work alongside Serco, Breckland and Norfolk to try and encourage them all to maintain and clean their assets within the public areas. Town team training, so the town team have recently been completing a lot of training and refreshing their training to allow their duties to be carried out safely and competently. These have included scaffold tower pasma training, ladder training, playpark inspection and safety training, and cemetery and churchyard safety training as well. This coming April, we will see the team also take on the further training needed for them to carry out more in-depth inspections and the repairing of also the playpark equipment as well going forward. This will be a great investment within the team, which will show significant savings going forward within house maintenance being carried out where previously contracted out to outsourced companies. Grazing, so potential new graziers have all recently been contacted and we have received positive interest for the sites. We are just waiting for all forms and information packs to be submitted and we can then work alongside the committee and a working group potentially to look forward through and choose the preferred grazer or grazer's if more than one will be set up for the different sites. We currently have one local farmer that has submitted his pack already and is showing very keen interest in working alongside the community. The chosen grazer will not only provide livestock for sites but also support annual town events with the promoting of open spaces further with their livestock and grazing knowledge. We will look to work with them in delivering organised guided walks for schools and local groups, as well as supporting officers in writing bids to secure funding for individual sites. This will help improve assets current and future with the replacement of fencing water supplies, stockholding pens where needed. The team have recently been installing the new grazing signage to the various sites ahead of the season. Thirty new signs are now clearly stating to anyone walking within the designated areas that all dogs must be kept on leads and dog waste must be cleaned up. These areas include the Barnham Common, Ford Meadow and Castle Park. Castle mound and ramparts, we've recently had a number of contractors visit the castle mound to view the major works needed for cutting and removing and treating other self-set trees that have taken hold on the site ahead of the grazing season. The specialist grounds contractor who has previously worked on protected sites has visited in late December to look at a robotic flail of the vegetation and bramble. He is currently submitting his proposal and method statement which will be sent into Historic England for a consent to be granted and for works to proceed on site. Once his proposal and quote has been approved and the consent granted, the works will take place before the bird nesting season. This work is vital to the ancient schedule monument and the site's future. Barnham Common, mechanical cutting will soon be taking place on Barnham Common. These works are part of the vegetation management plan, which will see the vast amount of gorse and vegetation removed that has grown and taken over within the central areas of the common site. This needs to be removed to allow the site to be managed, allowing wildflowers and wildlife to thrive on the protected site. I've just had an update today that the contractor will be starting work next week on the Barnham Common on the football field side. So Fredericks Wood, a tree safety inspection was recently carried out to all of our open spaces where trees are located. The survey has reported that residents in Sir Fredericks Wood are experiencing issues at the back of their properties due to the trees. We are exploring options as to how to proceed with regard to supporting the residents going forward. A tree surgeon recently met in December on site with residents at their properties to discuss through the concerns and also to view the trees from each garden area. The contractor is now putting together a proposal of works which will see all the boundary trees trimmed upward of at least four metres in height with any overhanging branches and limbs, overhanging any garden removed. The town floral displays, the town team are currently preparing and planning for the spring bedding plants for the town's floral displays in the coming months. They continue to maintain the winter plant as in in due course, these will provide a more colourful display when seasonally available. SAM2, the SAM2 machine, speed machine has recently been installed on Castle Street and will be gathering data for a period of around four weeks. The data once retrieved will then be passed over to Norfolk highways and Norfolk police and the next location we've chosen for SAM2 will be the London Road. Conservation volunteers, the volunteers have been busy working alongside David and the town team throughout the month of December. Sites including Barnham Common have seen a removal of gorse as part of their management plan for sites on the riverside of the common. Litter picking and checking of the sites was also carried out to report back any concerns of the areas following their visits. The group have continued to check fences, gates, as well as litter pick sites including Barnham Common, Ford Meadow, Castle Park, Sir Fredericks Wood and Main Street Woodland. To say thank you to the volunteers for all their hard work and efforts through 2023, we invited them to attend a fun activity event at the cemetery chapel. The activity saw group members making Christmas wreaths during the activity, some sweet treats and light refresh, festive refreshments were served to attendees. As part of the conservation group's dynamics, we're covering a multi-range of skills to maintain our open spaces, we've recently been liaising with our other conservation volunteer organisations to arrange site visits and skills courses at various local conservation sites. This will not only allow the volunteers a chance to learn a variety of new skills and techniques of working, but also allow them to gain and build their knowledge. This in turn will bring some fresh new ideas and knowledge for us to adapt within our open spaces going forward. Dates have now been confirmed for the group to visit Thompson Common and the Little Lou's project in 2024. Dates so far confirmed are Thursday the 30th of May and Thursday the 3rd of October and they'll be going on a visit between 10:30 and 1. We're also looking to hold another World About Fethford town event, which will be held following the success of last year's event that took place. This will also allow our grand new grazer to work closely with our volunteers and the community. We're already looking into organising some guided walks to help promote our open spaces further and David from the town team will lead these alongside our grazer's. The volunteer schedule for January will see the following areas worked on. Sir Fredericks Wood, cutting down any encroaching vegetation from paths and boundaries. Barnham Common removal of gorse on the riverside side of the site. We've also contacted Natural England to request permissions to create some scrapes on the site of the Creepin Marshore to help encourage this to thrive further. As soon as consent is given for these to proceed, the conservation volunteers and the team will contact Ian from Plantlife, who with the group will work alongside to carry out the task with the guidance. In total, over the month of December, the volunteers' hours equated to 29.5 hours.
Lovely, thank you very much. Any questions, please, for Nick?
Just a couple, please. One, the Glebe underpass, I've already passed on to Nick. I've been cleaning off tiles, one at a time, and then one of my neighbours said, thanks for doing the rest of it, I didn't realise. Said, no, no, it's okay, and I saw that they'd done the lot. It's made a massive difference and it's really gone down well with the residents, so thanks for that. That's been there a long time and I was making very little inroads in it. The next one is the volunteer activities, I think giving them rewards is absolutely brilliant. And, you know, treat said, I wonder if we can use those volunteers in some of our town events so they can show off what they've done, what they've learned and perhaps attract a few more volunteers. And my final plea, if I can, can I get the SAM2 data because we've got stag coming up Thursday? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That just reminded me, Mac, about the Glebe Close one. And we did a Facebook post about minister gate underpass when that was cleaned. It'd be useful to do some others because, you know, that attracted a lot of publicity. It's not our responsibility as a town council to do it, but we did it. And I think actually if we are going to the trouble of doing other locations around town, we need to be, you know, shouting about that. So if we could arrange for something to be done, that'd be really useful. We're still very liked on social media coverage about the work of the town team. So the more we can do to promote what's going on, the better. That said, I did see a post this week about the conservation group, which was great. Hazel.
Yeah, sorry, my voice is a bit funny. On the castle mound section, it says about the cutting. Yeah, so it says the work will take place before the bird nesting season.
Yeah.
So that doesn't offer a specific date because my concern is that most of this, it's mostly long-tailed tits that nest there and they start in mid-February.
Okay.
We're trying our best with to work alongside Historic England. It's the permissions that seem to take the long time and any correspondence coming back from them. We are pushing them as quick as we can, as fast as we can, emails are going out every week at the moment to try and gee them up. So as soon as we get permissions, the contractor is pretty much ready to go once we've got the quote for the works.
Yeah. And at what point do we wait and if we don't have a response, do we just give the go-ahead anyway?
I think it's going to have to come to that in the end, yeah, that we, an email and we've sort of explained that we've, you know, had numerous amounts of correspondence. The work needs to take place for the site's future. We also have a responsibility as an ancient scheduled monument to, you know, maintain it. So they have to understand that at some point we will have to carry out the work.
Because if we don't do it by mid-February, we then miss another year.
Yes.
And the site's already in a state, so I dread to think what it would be like by autumn. So I think we need to have a sort of date in our own head about what's our deadline. And if we don't get the consent, we just give the go-ahead to the contractor anyway and I'm perfectly happy with that.
Yeah.
Anything else, Hazel?
No, that's.
Chris.
Can we have the satin thing? Make your way. Kids that not the same time.
What a piece of it.
You know, you're not coming to get that end at all.
Yeah, I'll note that down for you, Chris.
Could you liaise with Nick and give him some specific locations?
Yeah.
By the shops. I think we've, we've been to Cloverfield at least twice, Castle Lane, Castle Street and Mumford Road. So I think we probably are due to, and London Road, it's probably our due to.
Every time we do a new site on the SAM2, do we have to get new brackets?
We're quite fortunate, we've got brackets that go on to the posts, so we're quite fortunate, they did come with them. So we did have some brackets that we've used to fit it in locations. Castle Street, we had to have a new post put in. Depending on the distance of where the junctions are and how far it can be set, we'll have to have a look on Nick Nieldway and just make sure there is enough clearance there for it to go. So it's not too close to the junctions, but I think with the stretch there, hopefully at some point we'll be able to go down on the left-hand side along there.
I did speak to Nick before and I'm not sure if this come under this, the grass on Mill Lane.
Yeah.
We did have a conversation some time ago about putting some blocks in to stop cars from aggressing onto the grass. And when you look at it now, you can see what they've done, donuts and even over last night they've done alone. You know, possibly we should try and chase that and get the blocks for it, leave enough space for it to park so we don't ban the park in by the river.
I think we're going to have to have a longer discussion about Mill Lane and Nuns Bridges area because there's a number of issues down there. It was Anglia and Water that blocked the road off and made a huge mess of the job. But the consequence of that was damage to our land, cutting across to Mill Lane. I don't know, I did say to Norfolk County Council, they should be forcing Anglia and Water to come back and reinstate the grass.
Be carrying out repair down there, so any damage that was caused, they did agree that that would be repaired. The town team today did go and put that cam down, so we have got a wildlife cam down there, so we're going to monitor the site because there has been a bit of activity of cars doing some spins and stuff on the grass. So we will try and see if we can capture anything going on in that area.
Good. Any other comments on town team managers' report? No, just two quick ones for me. One, grazer's, very pleased to see that we've got some interest now on grazing. And again, it's really important that we get the land grazed this year. Although I'm always keen to get the committee involved in selecting grazer's and all the rest of it. And I hope we can move quite quickly because I would imagine that they're already now making plans for this grazing season and I don't want them to get an offer to go elsewhere. We need to be getting these people signed up now, committed to town council land, not off down the road somewhere else. So the sooner, I don't care if we've got one, two, three or four, the sooner we get somebody confirmed, the better or we'll lose them.
Yeah, yeah, I did an email the other day, just to make it fair and give everybody the opportunity to say this is the last email. Please get in contact if you're interested with all the other parties. Like I say, one has come back with a really positive report and how he can sort of work with us as a town council. So we'll definitely chase up as soon as possible.
Yeah, signed up, committed.
Yep.
Before they move on.
I'm just going to reinforce that was my point exactly. We know from previous situations just how hard it is to maintain the grazer's and to make sure we reach a fair agreement. You know, they do face quite challenges when putting their animals on field and just keeping them there. Apart from everything that goes into the contract, it's all the daily hits and bobs and obstacles that show up along the way throughout the time that the animals are in place, there's always challenges and so it's not necessarily easy and there's not many available. And I have to agree with Terry. I think the fact we have some interests already positive and we definitely need to grab them before they go because it's very hard to come by.
There's more land than grazer's, so.
Definitely.
We need them more than they need us, frankly. So the sooner we get them confirmed, the better, thank you. And the last point I was going to make and it's slight tangent because it's not quite town council responsibility, but it does have a big impact on us. Outside the front ear, next to what used to be freshers, you will see four wheelie bins which are completely misused, shouldn't even be on the street as per their planning agreement. And if you go down there at the moment, they are completely overflowing, there is stuff on the floor and they look horrendous. And last year, when we had the Anglia and Bloom people walk through the town centre, they noticed them and they commented on them. And I reported it to Breckland in June and pointed out that the planning condition said that the bins would be inside and they're not. So I'm currently having a bit of a row with Breckland about it because there's no enforcement at all of the planning conditions. There's no enforcement of the misuse of the bins. Commercial waste is going into that bin and there is no separation of recycling and general waste. So I was going to ask the committee if you would agree for Nick to contact Breckland on our behalf. You know, we are working really hard to improve the town centre with floral displays and all the rest of it. And frankly, we could do without having those bins detract from all the work that we're doing and just put a bit more pressure on Breckland to actually, you know, to issues, planning and environmental waste point of view, get on with it, frankly.
Yeah, I think it's been going on for so long now and we've complained about it. And it is the most visible area, but Castle Street is also bad. So we've got two industrial wheelie bins that are on the road now.
Yes, I've seen that.
So they've not only moved them outside the shop, they've moved them on to the road.
Yeah.
So they cause a hazard for vehicles and pedestrians. All of those down there should have their bins out the back.
Do you know if they're Breckland waste bins?
I don't know. I think they might not be.
I think they're so true.
Yeah, they might be. But again, you know, if we're talking about sort of a humorous route going to the castle.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I'm just wondering if it's a conversation with highways or Breckland. If it is Biffa, then it'll be a conversation with highways, enforcing the highways.
But again, it was, that's a stag thing that we've raised with highways on many occasions, it's gone absolutely nowhere.
And if we could add that on to our list and just say.
Happy old drop a letter over to Environmental Services and the licensing team again.
Yeah, start the year as we mean to go on.
They've definitely been quite effective, so we contacted them a little while back just before Christmas because we had a few residents complain about a business up there that's opened quite late. Served some sort of alcoholic drinks and bits and pieces. And unfortunately, there was a local resident that was unhappy, so we did sort of pressure them and they did fortunately go out and deal with the situation. So touch wood, hopefully we can do this with the bins and things across.
Yeah. Thank you. Right, I think that's everybody that's contributed to that, we'll move on to triple five, two, three. Review of opportunities to further develop the cemetery. Welcome Sue, thank you very much for coming along this evening. The agenda item says to consider suggestions on how best to further develop the cemetery. I know obviously through Mac that you've got a lot of experience in this regard, so I'm really grateful for you to coming along and share that with us. I think this is probably the start of a conversation rather than answering all of the questions, but notes are over to you really.
Well, I was just going to introduce, I mean, you've got some notes up there because you've got it in notes pages. But you've been doing it, you know, as a professional for a long time. One of the key things about doing cemeteries as a professional is all the outlying areas around there, the parish councils aren't. And so what they do is they feed in soon and, you know, try and find out what they should be doing, what's relevant, what's latest coming up, you know. And so that's the important thing. And you've been doing it sort of 15 years now, so most of the problems that we've got, she's seen because we've got three different cemeteries. And I think that's why we can't compare ourselves to Beresford Edmonds because we haven't got a cemetery's only person, but we can quite easily copy a lot of the work she's already done, I think. Tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah, well, thanks for inviting me along. Hopefully, the council will get something out of this and take perhaps away a few ideas. From speaking to Mac, having a look at the cemetery myself and what I see other people put on Facebook. Sometimes it's really not nice, but that's nothing new, it's not, certainly not, you know, just Bedford. But I think, you know, there are some ideas that I have and things that I've got from other places that certainly would help here to bring you some revenue in, which is obviously always what needed. And just perhaps things that you haven't thought of because you haven't got a cemetery specialist, you know, I mean, the people who work for the town council you did a great job, the cemetery's lovely, it's a really nice cemetery. I mean, I don't know if you've all been hooked to the cemetery as a group and, I mean, I think when I first started at West Suffolk, we had a cemetery's group, a working group at the time of councillors and they always used to come quite regularly to the cemetery and they have been for years, to be honest. But I think it's really important that councillors know what's happening at the cemetery. So it's, you know, it is a good thing to get up there and get yourself familiar with it. So I think I get a lot of ideas because I'm in a cemetery manager and crematorium managers' group. Now, that's open to anybody in East Anglia, so we have people come from Yarmouth right down to Southend. And we just meet at different crematoriums or cemeteries about twice a year, sometimes three times. And we swap ideas and it's good to go and look at what other people are doing because there are some really small parishes we go to, so, or we go to some really big crematoriums who run cemeteries as well. But you can get, you know, some really good information from them people. So, and I say, I'm not here to be your savior or to save that with town cemetery, but I'm here to offer some free advice, so do what you like with it, really. So I think that picture is obviously a near real view of the cemetery. And as I said, it's a really good facility and it has lots of facilities that a lot of cemeteries don't have. You've got working chapel, you've got running water, which some cemeteries believe or not don't have. And, you know, and there's plenty of scope for development there as well, so that's good. So I think looking at those, just the marks that are on there, the red area is probably where you're working now, where you're doing the new burials, which has got the problem with the water table and the orange or yellow, depending what you're colouring, blind eye or colour blind you are. I think is the older part, that's nearer the lodge, that's probably the very new, very, the oldest part of the cemetery. Not every, I haven't seen your records, I can't be sure, but I would say that that is the oldest part, so. Right, okay, so I think there's, looking at what I know about the cemetery, I think there's three, three things that you need to sort of look at straight away. Having a look at your regulations that are on the internet, they're really out of date. And everything in the cemetery stems from the regulations, you need to keep them current, you need to be looking at them at least once a year, twice a year if not, if you've got to put something in or just as and when you need to change them, you need to bring it to committees and get things put in because people are very awkward when they lose somebody, people are vulnerable, people are nasty, people and they've gone even worse since Covid and, you know, we all probably know it through dealing with the public. And you've got to be one step ahead of them. So from every bad experience you get as council employees or councillors through the cemetery, you need to make a note of that and think, right, that needs to go into the regulations somehow to stop us doing it again. So we learn from our mistakes, don't we? So, so your regulations, you need to have a look at them. Our regulations for West Suffolk and for Newmarket Town Council, because obviously we manage their cemetery on their behalf. Still allows, you know, adapt them, take them and, you know, and put your own bits in. That's what everybody is, I sit there looking and reading other people's, I think that's good, I'll put that in or, and, you know, it's it's just a good thing to do and as I say, you just can't look at them enough. I think the ones that are on, I looked on the internet, I've been from 2018, six years ago, I mean, it's it, you know, everything's changed so much since then and they're really quite difficult to read. So people will go, you know, they say, well, I didn't know that because there's 28 pages, I think some of it's some really good information on there, but it's, you know, just keep, I would keep the regulations separate and just then have the information on your Facebook or on your website, but keep the regulations on a separate sheet. Other things you need to do is look at policies, I don't know how many policies you have for different things, if you have policies for, I think your memorial policies, I would assume you have policies for dedication items like benches and that sort of thing. You need policies because again, you need to be one step ahead of the public because otherwise they'll trip you up. And that, your policies will come from your regulations anyway, so that would definitely help. And the last thing I sort of looked at, thinking about is something that we do, is used unpurchased graves. Now, I know you have the problem with the water table and you're restricted on the numbers of new burials you can do each month. But looking at the older part of the cemetery, you must have graves there. I don't know how much records you've got for the older parts, if it's going.
We're pretty lucky, we've got quite a lot of extensive records, yes, lucky.
Have you got it recorded electronically or is it?
It's mostly manual, but we are going electronic as we're going along, so all the newer stuff is going electronic.
Yeah, I mean, what we need to get, we've got all ours scanned and that's fantastic because it means you can work anywhere. You can actually sell it, you can sell your information to companies. So, you know, that's probably a good thing. It's expensive, but it's not as expensive as you think. But it's a good way of putting your registered, your old registers, I mean, we've got registers from 1855 and we don't use them so much now, so which is good, you know, you really don't want to be, you know, destroying that history. But if you've got unpurchased graves that still belong to the burial authority, so that the town council are the burial authority for that with cemetery. So those graves, if they're unpurchased, even if it's somebody buried in them, belong to you. So if somebody's buried at, say, nine feet, there's two potential burial graves above that. So if you look back and find a grave and then on the month where you've had three burials or three potential burials and you could, and somebody wants a new one, you could actually use an old grave and bury someone in it. I would always tell somebody that there's somebody been in it. I would use obviously one that's got a headstone because you find even unpurchased graves do have headstones sometimes, but then I've got hundreds on in Berry Cemetery and hundreds in Haymarket, so then. then I've got hundreds on in Berry Cemetery and hundreds in Hayville. So there must be some here. But they potentially could see your income increase because you can offer that extra burial. I mean, I think I've spoke to funeral directors before. They said, oh, I've had to wait months at Bedford. I don't think it's quite that bad. But, you know, they like to moan. But yeah, that that would be, you know, a good opening for you and address that water problems. You probably see, as I said, there's three things, actually this four. So mapping. It's a bit, it's a bit like getting your registers scanned. We've just done GIS mapping of our cemeteries. And again, you can sell the information to companies and they sell it, you know, genealogy companies, that sort of thing. So you do make, you can make an income from it. And also you can make sure that it's it's quite tedious to do it. You need somebody on the ground. You need somebody in the office. So it's a bit of work, but once it's done, you can take all your maps from it. You can attach that to digging orders for your grave diggers. It's, you know, there's loads and lots of things, you know, benefits from actually doing it. It is something that perhaps you want to do in the future, but it's a real step forward and you might even find unused graves, which again brings you a bit more income. So as the last thing says, all these things are time consuming, unfortunately, you know, we having the staff to do that is is the thing. So. So your public facing tasks, inquiries, complaints and your sextons duties, I mean, all these things are quite hard on the staff. Now, I don't care what anybody says, cemeteries aren't car parks or running the Carnegie. It's cemeteries, you've got the fact that somebody has lost a loved one and that'll happen to us all, you know, it may have happened to some of us already. But you can't say, oh, you're going to put half an hour to do that because it might not take half an hour, it might take an hour, it might take two hours. So so a lot of the work involved with cemeteries is 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 time consuming really. So, you know, and and the staff needs training to be able to deal with those things because that, even going out to do the sexting duties can really, really it's, there's a thing called retransference. And if you're constantly if you're constantly exposed to grief as you are, if you go out to do the sexting duties, you might not think, you might think, oh, go to a funeral, I don't know that person. But the fact is, you're all the time, you're taking on other people's grief and people tend to talk to you about it. And, you know, if you're not getting the support from councillors and your colleagues, then quite easily spiral into something, you know, quite bad. So, you know, it's important to to support the staff and make sure they've got the training and the knowledge and the experience to say, actually, you know, no, that's it. We're not doing that. Or it's because I would say the cemetery is very easy to say yes to everybody. And that's why a lot of our cemeteries are in messes because previous managers have gone yet. They have a bench there, do this, do that. But to say no is quite difficult. But sometimes you do need to say no because it is, you know, essential for keeping the cemetery fair to everyone really. So.
One of the things you said on that, which I thought was interesting was that because it's public facing, if you've done all the other stuff, all the mapping, all the regulations, it makes this bit so much easier. And I think that's the support to staff bit.
So looking at revenue. So it's just some ideas that, I mean, we haven't got all these to be honest, but they're just different different options to to make in really. I mean, speculate to accumulate, you have to spend some money, whether you spend some. You've already got trees. I think you've got probably about fifteen to twenty trees of that new.
Fifty, yeah.
You know, you could quite easily map them out, do some good advertising, get some notice up. People love them. People, the fact, you know, you sell them as a renewal thing. It's great. And we sell a tree for £598 for a 10 year lease and we put a little a little board around it because we say to people, you can't put anything on the tree. You can't stop putting people, people putting stuff on, you know, it's it's like, don't put it on the graves. They put it on. So if we put it in the little border, keep it within that, they get a plaque to go with it. They're pretty, the trees are there anyway. So actually, it's pretty easy money, you know. We we put sort of trees in 12 at a time at the end of a row. And if I start advertising perhaps six months before I put them in, I've sold off them before. I've got waiting lists. So it's, they are really good. And, you know, sell two trees, paid for all of them. Good old do trees are. So. So but I think on the next slide, it just says, there's some things about memorial trees, just saying this is bounty policies again. You need to make sure that your policy reflects your terms and conditions. How much is going to cost? How long your lease is going to be? Possibility of extension? What happens if the tree's vandalized, if it dies? Your little boarding, your council ownership. But again, just just copy somebody else's. We're happy to send you our stuff, you know, it's it's there. In fact, all ours will be, all our forms will be online next few weeks anyway. So stay from there. So I think the next slide is about sanctum vaults. And if you if you go back, you've got a picture of a sanctum.
I've got a picture of a sanctum vault. And and what that is, is somewhere to put cremated remains. So the ones we've got at something now, which you can see on the line on the beige area there, they're they're ground level. So they're ones that more or less go into the ground, if you like, with a with a cover over it. What these are, is they sit above ground and the item goes in. So it's like a like a pedestal and you can increase these, put them next to each other, have long lines of them. And the reason we talked about sanctum vaults here is because if you've got a water table problem, which we keep getting told we have here, if you filled that with a thousand sanctum vaults, it wouldn't affect the water table whatsoever. Now, I'm not saying that's the answer, but it's just as an example, whereas we're struggling with, you know, handfuls of burials. But the but the problem is for the for the public in debt, there is no option at the moment. We've got a line of paving slabs or a burial. These, you know, they they can have the the designs on them. They're a bit like a headstone. And and yeah, you've, they cost a little bit. You've got to put groundwork in.
They're not everybody's property. I mean, I I just think it's nice to have an alternative. And I've been trying to get Newmarket Town Council to get these since we ran the cemetery seven years ago. And we've got a really stick in the mud there. And she said, not over my dead body. And I said, it could be arranged, but she but she's, but she doesn't like them. She doesn't like them. And she said, when I've gone, you can do what you like. But but they they're a good income source. I mean, if you or with the first week, we had 12 to start with. And it do take a bit of time to get on. But at the moment, the the cost of what we're buying them in for, and even with the foundation slab you have to put down, we're making £500 per bolt. So if you put, you know, if you put 12 in and you sold 12, you're at £6,000. And the fact that you're just offering another service, you know, you're offering an alternative. People like them. People like them because they, dad said, I don't want to be buried. So it's in somebody's head that they're not getting buried because they're not in the ground or or they're on a tight budget because.
Think about the rough cost of laying the ground and then for those 12, for example, I was asked to set it all up before you get the income in for you, they were sold.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. Yeah, I can't remember which our foundation was. It was quite a long time we had last one in.
Try to compare investment versus return on the long term of actually.
Yeah. But I mean, they are.
I don't like the fact that I have a ground. They're more visible for people that doesn't know.
They're very tactile. People like to touch them and and.
They do give quite visibility in person.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can make any. We've gotten, you, did you come to, did you come to?
Yeah, it's lovely.
Little squares we've been buried, but we've got them in lines at Hayville. As I said, they took, they were quite slow to to start. But, I mean, we've just had, well, last year there before we had an extra 36. And I think, you know, I mean, they go really well.
The the drawing up there is mine and it's quite bad, I know. But the idea is the orange bit at the end is your sanctum vaults and the other bit is a path. So what you do is you build your path to the destination. And as you sell those vaults, you then work your way back along the path.
Yeah.
And as you put another load of sanctum vaults in, you also put in a tree, which you then you know, is now a memorial tree. And or a bench or something like that. So you're actually instead of just putting lines of graves in, you're you're almost imagining building a garden.
Yeah.
And that's the appealing thing for people. Now, as Sue said, there is there is outlay. You've you've got to do that groundwork first. But once started, it it sort of takes hold.
I suppose with that, with the orange, but even if you put 12 there or six and see how they went, then, you know, they will go eventually, but I think they will take off. I think people will be really keen to to use them. The West Suffolk Crematorium have them and, you know, they, God knows how much they charge them. I mean, they're really expensive. But I mean, we're we're just putting ours up next month and there'll be £1,447. So, you know.
Can I ask a rather silly question, if you don't mind? When you supposedly bought one, we've bought one of these. Right, that's that's it. That's the outlay then. They done, the next person who goes in doesn't have to pay to have to use this one.
No, so you sell it on a 25 year lease. You sell them as as cremation plots. So well, whatever your lease term is. And then it depends what you want to do. I mean, for me, I think cremation plots take such a small area up in in the cemetery that I wouldn't do anything. So I always say to people, if if you bury someone or and tear someone's ashes in the vault now or in the ground, and then you don't use the extra plot because we sell everything for two. And then in 26 years, the other person, the partner dies and and you want to use the, you know, the vault or the other remaining plot in remaining space in the earth engraved, you would have to buy the exclusive right to bury again. So. But if you don't, if you've already put both in, you know, it'd be a really mean burial authority that said, right, we're going to dig ashes up or whatever. You just, you just, just that's what happened really. And it's just too much work involved with it. So. But I mean, crematorium, West Suffolk Crematorium, sell them on a 10 year lease and they do take the ashes out. So, yeah. And they're, they're a business and they're they're out to make money. They they won't tell you that when you go to the crematorium because they do cremations very well and all their after sales very well. But that's where they make their money. We as councils need to be more businesslike, like West Suffolk Crematorium or, you know, Breckin. We need to make money. So that's that's what it's about now, unfortunately. But the fact is, we still need to take into account that people are local and people, you know, are on a budget and and everything's tight. And and so they've lost someone. So which is the big thing, I think, for me. So. But yeah. That was it really for the, I mean, I can sit here and talk to you all night about cemeteries. I'm sure you don't want me to, but they're just just a few things that, you know, probably, you know, you could have a chat amongst yourselves and 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 see, you know, come over to bury and have a look at them or you know, look at other places that, you know, we get ours from a company called Columberry, which is, which are those vaults. But I'm just getting some new vaults in at Hayville this year, which are a bit slightly different than and then from a different company called Burlingham Solutions and they're based in Norwich. They do our headstone testing for us, but it's big company. So they do lots of things, but it's an independent company. And they'll be a little bit more expensive, but I'll charge more. But I know I'll sell them because they're near an old plot where I always get lots of people saying, I want to be near mum and dad or want to be near my auntie. So I know that they'll get sold. So. Yeah, it'll fit the, you know, you can definitely look around and, you know, there's money to be made with those.
And in terms of next steps, Mac, I know before Christmas we sort of set up a cemetery working group, didn't we, which you were heading up? And we had a sort of initial chat about it. I must have been at the December meeting. How do you want to take this all? Because I think in many ways, we need a sort of cemetery development plan, don't we? Is, you know, is that something that you feel comfortable with? I can't remember who was on the group. But that's the sort of group we need to come up with an initial plan, don't we?
I'm happy to do that. And I think, you know, obviously Kerry needs to be involved in this. It'd probably be helpful if she was here, but you know, she's got a wealth of knowledge alongside Nick on this. So I think the most important thing is making a rough plan, but actually seeing what bits of that admin we can get done first. However, I would say I think the memorial trees are such an easy win. We could do that now.
Yeah.
With the spring, well, I don't know what trees they are. Are they?
Cherries.
See, they, in spring, you can sell them. People, oh, they're lovely in spring. It was a good show in summer.
Got one on the agenda tonight.
Love it. You know, they just.
If we have another memorial bench in that cemetery, I might go crazy. You know, it's, it's one of them. And, you know, I love the idea of getting actually, you know, it's good for the environment, it's good for all sorts of things. But memorial trees is it is probably the first aspect of a development plan that we can pull together quite quickly. So I'd be really pleased to see that.
You know, you can get, I mean, if if you want to, I mean, we sell our plaques that we make for the trees. Because we we have a company or chap who makes metal backing for us. And then we have a company in Bedford who makes the actual plaques. And our guys in the cemetery screw the plaques and the and the backing together. So we we actually sell them to people for £104. I'm happy to sell them to you in the first instance, rather than if you didn't want to go out and do it yourself, you know, we could help you to get going with that.
Discount, yeah, yeah. With a discount.
But yeah, it's funny to do. I mean, I think I did have a quick look at your fees and charges earlier. Mac showed me his first fees and charges. I don't know if that's how they set out, but I mean, from the ones I looked at on the internet, it's, they really could do with simplifying a little bit, just, you know, in a better grid or you know, if people can't understand it, you know, it just makes life a bit more difficult at that sad time because people don't look particularly forward, do they? They always wait till the worst has happened. But yeah, I mean, you you can certainly, you can certainly put your prices up again. You are really at the, I mean, we're at the lower end of our benchmarking.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's a, there's a number of different issues. Some of them are sort of governance issues, which I think we are very aware of. And then there's the sort of practical development type issues and the sort of missed opportunities. So I think we can tackle both but separately. So if we, to charge you, Matt, with the cemetery development plan aspect and then bring a draft, but noting that the tree aspect, we need to get moving quite quickly.
Yeah, I think we could, I think we could do that quite reasonably. It's simply a matter of mapping them.
Yeah.
Our liaison Nick, see what we've got to do to build wise and then, yeah, we're good to advertise, I think.
Yeah. And then the governance side of it, there's going to be a couple of things. Hopefully we're going to approve tonight that'll improve the governance. But it's a sort of first step really. There'll be some, you know, other things that will come in time. And I suspect we'll adopt the fees as presented, noting that it's a sort of 10% increase. But once we've improved the cemetery further, then of course we have reason to increase the fees even more. So.
The thing is, if you don't, if you are at the bottom end, if people are looking, they go, why is that? It's so cheap. I mean, they're probably pleased it. But we had the same, exactly the same thing when we took over Newmarket. The year before we took it over, it was £294 for an exclusive right to burial for 50 year lease. People were coming from London to get buried in Newmarket. It's a beautiful cemetery. Anyway, it looks over horse paddocks. If you're into horses, it's ideal. But they were coming up from London and and not, they didn't even have a double, or they, I think they did charge double fees. I mean, even that's less than £500 or £600 to to bury. If you're looking at City London Cemetery, you're talking about £4,000 for a plot. So, you know, yeah, you can definitely, I mean, West Suffolk Crematorium put their fees up twice last year and the year before. So don't feel scared to do it.
No, I think we've got, well, I think there's a bigger increase built into these proposals than there was originally. So we're moving in the right direction.
We put ours up 10, some of ours up 10% this year. It's a good, good year to do it because obviously there's no elections this year. So.
Any further questions for Sue?
Are you happy with that, Nick?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you, Sue. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Very useful. Once we've.
Clarified, thank you.
Yeah. If you were happy to come back once we've got our development plan and we've maybe talked it through with you.
I'm sure Mac will show you it in advance. You're probably going to use it right.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So. I'm lucky she's doing that. We've got four cemetery related items requiring decisions tonight. The first is the 556, number one, the Burial Administrators' Report, which has been circulated in advance. Any questions on the report?
I was interested in the, um, the online survey and I just wondered who the survey went to. Did it go to anybody who walked through the cemetery, people who were going for bereavement? I'm not quite sure how that was.
Is this the one that had the, um, twelve people responded?
Yes.
And there was a QR code on the posters in the cemetery. So most people physically out.
Yeah, visitors.
But it wasn't particularly plugged very hard. So I'm not surprised there wasn't many responses, but it's useful anyway. Um, just, so the only thing I want to say on the administrator's report is can we, um, as a committee note our appreciation for Mark Skinner, services for the memorial tree.
Yeah.
Uh, that's very well received and very popular. But we could drop an email to them and just say, the committee asked us to pass on our bank's credit where it's due and all that. Um, so the second part then is the review of the opening hours and to discuss the trialling of the extended opening hours at the cemetery. Um, are you happy to talk us through that bit? Alan, I think that'd be really useful. I'm just going to pop to the loo while you do that.
I think if you recall, the planning committee meeting in July two, three, uh, it was signed to do a pilot. The whole of criteria set out, you know, councils were concerned about damage, automatic gates needed to be investigated. Gates at the entrance to the cemetery of the London Road is needed to be closed at four P M. The alternative interest to remain open, that was part of the pilot. Uh, and there was always an understanding that visitors would be at the cemetery at seven, uh, P M. And that proposal really was, was, was adopted at the committee's meeting. Um, as, as a town council, we monitored our, our mail that and, and reported and everything else. Uh, we had no incidences of any antisocial behaviour or vandalism, et cetera. Our burial administrator, however, did receive two, you know, two emails, uh, one just saying that there was a theft of some, 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 uh, items or trinkets, uh, and the other one was that there was a theft of a vase. But whether that happened during cemetery opening hours, whether it happened at night, uh, uh, they weren't ready, uh, noticed. And the other thing that the team noticed is that there's, there's a person sleeping in the cemetery. There was this evidence of that every now and again. We've then set up the, uh, results of the online survey. A shop person will pick up that we had twelve respondents, but in some answers we've got eleven and some, we've got thirteen, but, uh, we can't, we can't quite work that one out. Uh, but anyway, I think it just gives, it gives an indication. Um. I think there was quite good support for, uh, a seven P, seven A M, seven P M, uh, uh, summertime. Um, there was a little bit of concern about antisocial behaviour and you'll see in question three, that was really the, the, the key issue. Um, and then in terms of some of the projects, there was diverse response to that, et cetera. Um, so. There's not very much you could take away from the survey, but it did indicate that, 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 you know, having the cemetery open a little bit longer than uh, um, might be something to, uh, to consider. In terms of the cost of installing automatic gates, uh, we got some close to that, to seven thousand pounds. Uh, we were still worried that we would, it's, it's not the opening that's problematic at our cemetery because the works team work from there. It's actually the closing. And so how would you ensure that people are, people are?
They have a push button on the inside.
Okay, so.
Anybody who gets locked in can get out.
Good. So, you know, if there would be the closing, that would be fundamental to not really the opening. Whereas I imagine some of the other cemeteries, you would use the gates both to open and close, whereas we don't actually need that. But it's fine. So it's just, again, it's a factor for the committee to, to consider. Um. In terms of just going through it, we've, we've made some recommendations, um, that the, um, summer period, um, that the cemetery basically stays open, uh, but the vehicle, vehicle access is, um, runs from seven A M to seven P M in the summer months and seven A M to four P M in the winter months. Uh, London Road and Swind, Swind Close Gates, we open at all times in the summer period, as at four P M in the, in the winter period. And to ensure that we have no issues that we've had in previous, this year and two years ago, the cemetery is not closed for Christmas Eve. We'd actually recommend that that, that be kept open. That's.
Um, seven P M in the summer. Uh, how do we deal with that with staffing?
Um. When we bring it in house, we will make a plan to, to, to do that. I think one of the things that we, the top of this item is, is, is for two access to it because we've also looked at the, at the emergency, um, um, monitoring. And we would have to take something to personally, we will get advice as to how best to do that and actually take that to the personal committee as well. So.
I'm thinking about cause and effect here. If we agree seven P M in the summer, is the next agenda item going to be, it's going to cost you four grand a year because we've got to employ somebody to over and above what you guys do as a works team. That's my nervousness before we agree to it.
Okay. I, I think, I think just getting it clear through, uh, getting actual advice on that is, is, is critical that we're going to have to do it for some of the other suggestions. And consider this agenda.
And similarly with seven A M, uh, at the moment it's eight A M because I think that ties in with the works team sharing. What time do you guys start?
Seven thirty.
Yeah. So again, we're making a rough run back by going seven A M because you guys don't even start at seven. I mean, I, I don't, ordinarily, Monday to Thursday and now Monday to Friday, there's no issue with opening. I've never had any complaints. It's always a weekend. It's always Monday days. So I don't want to change anything that you guys are doing at the moment because that works really well. It's all the other bits that don't work. Um. But that would be my concern. Um, the only other thing I'm going to whinge about because Stuart's here, uh, four P M. Now, Stuart probably messaged me about probably twice a week telling me that the cemetery gates are shut at three fifty P M or three fifty five P M or three forty five. I know they're locked by our staff when they finish work and they might start earlier or whatever. If we are advertising those gates to be shut at four, they have to be shut at four.
Yep. I shall speak to the team. Lovely. Thank you.
You happy now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy texting me anymore. He's got a point. And it's just about consistency.
It's obviously ten minutes, but it's all, yeah.
Well, people moan about five minutes. We don't want to buy milk from Sainsbury's. So, um, you know. Um, how does everyone else feel about seven A M, seven thirty, eight A M? Any sort of strong views? I, I don't know why people don't want to go to cemetery at seven and half seven. I think eight o'clock's perfectly acceptable.
Whatever time we put on, somebody will want to be there quarter of an hour before or after. So it's, if you can tie it in with the works team time, that just makes sense.
I think, as you say, it's, it's the bank holidays and particularly Christmas this year.
Yeah.
You know, we was bombarded with emails about the cemetery not being open at certain times, which embarrassing really because a lot of people were making appointments, you know, they like to see their loved ones at Christmas and it was, you know.
That is true. That is.
It's the thing, three hundred and sixty three days a year, they're probably not too worried. Christmas Day, uh, is the.
If we, if we had to change it to, to, if we changed it to eight A M, we know it'll be open by eight A M because the works team will in and out by the particular times. It might be worth whilst.
I think A M is acceptable.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think in the morning, eight A M is, is reasonable for, we can possibly have at least everybody, but if the people get tension with, with the stuff we have. Um, and I rather shop away after an hour day for the majority of the year and then add on on special occasions where people feel like they need to be close to the family at Christmas and et cetera when they want to visit, you know, people they lost. So.
Okay, so A M, summer and winter period, seven P M closure in the summer. But the pedestrian great gate to be open in the summer. Um, and then four P M in the winter period.
And then the option can left, left out from Christmas Eve for Christmas.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, happy with that?
Is that all bank, like, count Easter as well or are you going to just do the Christmas?
After, but we haven't, uh, put it this again. We haven't done a bunny Easter with the, with the.
It's good. Not just Christmas Eve, Mothering Sunday Eve.
Yeah.
Yeah, because after Christmas Day, I would say that Mothering Sunday is the busiest day in cemetery. All in short, I think, those, those three. Here we go.
He's mentioned keeping it open a little bit longer on those particular occasions when people are more sensitive and tend to go to, to visit people they lost.
Yeah, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Easter. Okay. And there is a separate discussion later in the agenda about what happened at Christmas and I'm going to read something for you and give you a bit of an update on that. But this item is to agree the opening times. So. Um, happy with that?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, cemetery fees and charges. Again, it's been a big piece of work. Thank you to Kerry for working on this. Um. The fees have been presented. Um, they're not the fees forevermore. I think we need to make a decision, then review them in time. Um, in a much more, uh, punctual way than has been the case in the past. So we will, uh, have regular reviews. But, um, are you happy to approve the recommended fees and charges as presented?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I have a proposer? And a seconder? All agreed?
Yeah.
And then lastly, under cemetery, we have an application for a memorial bench. Not another bench. Um.
Just a little bit of the price.
They are expensive, I think, but then that's for a long period of time. So it's not each year. So. Um, and we do, you know, and the guys do a really good job, um, maintaining them and preparing them. Um. Do we have a specific location in mind at the cemetery?
So it's close to the, um, grave of the deceased.
Yeah.
Yes. So it's going to be on the newer side. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Uh, cool. Uh, are members happy to approve the request?
Would you pay a buck to it? Yes. Do, do we bring these kind of memorial applications for every committee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to? The reason I asked.
Memorial bench policy says we have to.
If we've got a memorial bench policy that's quite clear and you're only allowed a certain amount in a certain area, unless that was going to be breached, I couldn't see what the issue would be.
I can't remember why, but it's, it's, there's definitely a memorial bench policy or street memorial furniture policy. And I think it says it has to be approved by the committee. I think it's about making sure there's not too many, um, you know, in one location or is it appropriate to put that particular bench there? Um, so I think it's, you know, to give officers some approval, basically. Buck stops with us.
Yeah, fair enough.
I was just going to say, if we have a sort of a work a tight policy, that's all those locations, how many maximum, you know, and those things, then we can just let it flow, just let it work within the, as providing people, you know, uh, feel, feels up all the requests, the eligibility for it and then the payment, whatever. We can just not having to deal with it until we breach that cap and then it'll be, you know, if we have to, then we come to, we do with it when that time comes.
We never turn anyone down.
Yeah, hopefully not.
We don't know who we're going to get a bench request for. Chris.
These, on regarding what Mac's pointing, we're not going to have to agree every trio.
No, so when we write the policy, we need to bear that.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that leads us on to another point because, you know, like the benches actually, uh, I mean, I can read the thing, but could I point to where that is on the map? Probably not. And I don't suppose any of the rest of us could. So we're agreeing to something that we don't really fully get in that respect. So I think we'll just tighten up the regulations in some way and it can come out in the report if there's a problem.
Yeah, I, I, well, I do know where this chap is buried. It's free down from me down. I do know where the bench is going to come.
I think it'd be useful together with sort of sorting out the regulations, updating those and actually putting a map in, you know, a, a design, a draw of the whole landscape of the, within the cemetery and compounds, what goes where and which areas are vacant. So we can then work out. You know, and it actually makes it easy for us visually to see going from there if we're going to add on, uh, you know, the other symptoms or whatever it is that we want to do with it.
It looks like we're going to have quite a review of some policies. So I'm sure Alan is.
A major revise of the, of the.
Evidence, yeah. It wasn't that long ago, the memorial bench policy was reviewed, but it was incredibly outdated. Um, so it just needs to be.
If we could, Sue, she was quite helpful, mentioned is that our regulations are quite outdated. So they need to be, we need to be on top of.
I agree. And we only ever had a memorial bench policy and, you know, we did diversify it a bit. But that's the reason we have so many benches here or at the cemetery, when what we really need is benches along the river or places where people actually want to walk. Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly.
Right. Anything else cemetery related under any of them?
When are they going to get the edge up?
It's on their job. So within the next few weeks. Yeah, within the next few weeks, I've, I've been in touch with the contractor and assured me it's on their jobs. Yeah, I will keep chasing for you.
Okay.
Quick, quick questions, mostly for Matt. Uh, who was on the group that was intent to work in the cemetery? Because I don't know if I was in one of that group or not. I just wanted to know to see whether or not, and taking it from there, how it's.
I don't, I don't know who else is on it.
Right, so there we need.
So I know it's me.
You organise the meeting, invite all councillors, then you can get it.
Okay, so we're still, we're still going to organise the group basically. All right.
Okay, I'll invite all.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, no worries.
You can't sneak away when you've told us already.
We know where you're going, yeah.
Can we make that an action point, Karen, that, um, uh, the cemetery development plan and it will be taken forward by the working group? And if we had a first draft of that in six months, that seems fair?
Yeah, yeah, that's easy, I think. I say that.
Right, let's move on before we run out of time. Uh, preliminary financial report for amenities, item five five seven. And the preliminary financial report for the cemetery, five five eight. Anything to note, Alan, on either of those reports?
I think from the amenities side, our income is up. I think there is a little bit of, of this match. But we're going to be, it's really close to the total budget figure for the year. So that's, that's really encouraging. On the expenditure side, it's the playpox has really hurt us. We've, you know, we've got, uh, twenty five thousand pounds of expenditure. Uh, we only budgeted fifteen for the whole year. So that is, that's going to hurt us. So the overall results, we are um, slightly up at our expenditure. We are way, we, we weigh up at the moment against our budgeted income because we only expect to receive the R P A money in in January, February. We've received a lot of it up to December. So overall, it's not too bad, but, you know, what, hopefully the amount of money that we spent on our playpox is a good investment and we won't have future costs coming forward. We were worried about vandalism at one stage. It is a problem, but it's not, it's, it hasn't perpetuated itself, you know, since, what is it, since July, August, it's actually, uh.
Too cold to go out in like, play areas at the moment.
That might be one of the advantages of the, of the con vendor. On the cemetery side, um, we, I've put the, it's, it's we, we are today to not billing. I've made sure that every time we do a cemetery report now, I've put the statistics at, at the bottom of the report, the ashes and tournaments and the burials. And really what impacts on the, on the income is the mix of that. How much of that is non parishioners and how much of it is parishioners? Because if you've got a non parishioner, you know, the fees are really, you know, they've actually doubled what, what it is for parishioner. So if we don't get our mix right or we, we, we budget, uh, uh, it'll have an impact. So I think what we've done, that we've done is we've adjusted to the historical uh, um, kind of trends where there's been a higher amount of non parishioner to parishioner, uh, ratio. Um, in terms of expenditure, we don't spend very much on the cemetery. Um, so our cemetery maintenance is, is, is down. Our grass cutting is the only one that's, that's slightly higher than budget, but that's because we increased our contract by about forty two percent. So there's nothing too concerned. It would be, the revenue side of the cemetery is disappointing. So some of the comments we've had earlier on this evening might actually be of assistance to us.
Any questions? Nope. Uh, note both of those reports, move on to five five nine, small grants, uh, we have free to discuss. Um, I would use my own pack, you see, but, um, uh, it's not printed the even pages in my pack, so I don't have everything. I've managed thus far, but, uh, did Alan do it, Karen? Okay.
I had nothing to do with it.
Okay, well, uh, so the first one is the Fettford Short Matt Bowls Club. We have supported them previously. I'm sure you'll all remember.
Yeah.
Uh, they've been through the usual checks and the view is that they are compliant and they want some money for some new equipment, I think, from memory.
It's just in terms of the, the application, the, um, constitution, I, I think they've done, Karen, they've done which is printing, they've printed every second page. So there is a little bit of incompateness. So if the committee is, uh, minded to support this, we would just ask for that, that missing information because you can't, you know, we've had to make assumptions in terms of, in terms of some of the information. So it's just.
So the recommendation is for approval subject to receipt of full constitution. So the recommendation is for approval subject to receipt of full constitution. Uh, can I have a proposer? Chris Harvey and a seconder? Mac, all in agreement? Good. It's bowls. And the uh, second one is uh, Fettford Singers again. We've previously approved this, uh, and we need to uh decide that we wish to continue to support it and to approve the money. And this is for the um, the symphony of thing, isn't it? The, the Baroque assemble. Event. And the, what I will say about the singers is they're always very good at acknowledging the support from the town council. And I went to their concert in December and they're very grateful, I think, for this money and pay. Um, but right. Uh, can I have a proposer for Fettford Singers? Stuart Terry and a seconder? Carla Baretto, all in agreement? Lovely. And the last one, which is slightly different to usual, um, is the Friends of Fettford Museum. This is linked to their, uh, they've got a number of anniversaries coming up, um, but obviously the hundred year anniversary this year now. So they want to evidence local support with their funding applications to the lottery and elsewhere. I'm uh, happy to support this from the small grant scheme. But I would say that if we are to give them the money, it's the very least that we should be giving them. You know, we are really lucky to have the ancient house museum. In fact, if they manage to get what is it, two hundred thousand pounds from other sources. If they struggle to make up the match funding, then I think they should come back to us and we should be as a town council looking to give them, you know, more than just a small grant essentially.
And if it's winning really promotional and cultural and activities and learning education.
Absolutely.
The council is sort of at the core of what we should be promoting anyways.
I agree. Uh, so I'm happy to propose that one. Is somebody happy to second? Carla, yep, all in agreement?
Yep.
They've applied for the five hundred, we'll give them the five hundred. But at some point, if they are still short, we might have a conversation. Other, other funding. Anything else on the small grounds?
There are three in the pipeline. Uh, two of them uh, have come in too late to, to future. And the third one, I have no idea who it is, what it's for, because their charity number doesn't exist, their name, we can't, they have to put their name on the application form. We've had to write a brief formal letter to them to ask them, can you kind of provide a little more information? So there are three more. Uh, for next, for next one.
Good. And with those three that we've approved, how much of these six thousand pounds have we got left? Do you know? I normally look for that, but I can't find it because it's not printed.
Until when was from year to year and that's so. How much?
It's on here, that.
All, all the grants have been disbursed to date.
Okay.
Um, so three, seven plus fifteen hundred is five, two, that's the exact. About five thousand two hundred, what people prove.
We've got about a grand left.
Yeah, okay.
And when, when is it called?
In March.
In March.
So yeah, it's bizarre that it's financial year rather than.
When fear should be near one.
Committee year even.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's good. Plenty of applications. Five sixty, monitoring of amenities facilities on weekends and public holidays. Goes back to our earlier discussion.
Yes.
And shall I hand that one over to you, Nick?
Yep, okay. So monitoring, so following recent incidents with the contractors not unlocking, unlocking the cemetery and the public toilets not being available when they should. We've been looking at some ways as a management team as to how we can improve our service to make sure that someone is available should an emergency situation occur at a site outside of normal office working hours. We're currently in the process of setting up an emergency contact number for the town council where a staff member will be contactable out of hours when the main office is closed. This number will be made available and publicized to the public councillors and emergency services. New signage will be produced for the sites where the new number will be displayed. And to give an emergency point of contact if a site is not open or closed, or if a safety concern or situation is present within a facility or site that is owned by the town council.
Comments?
For this fight, it's got, sorry, it's Carla first.
Oh, why?
It's a bins.
Yeah, the one by the pipe, those pay areas overflowing, definitely doesn't.
So. I would have thought that an out and out, out of hours call would be out of hours emergency. I don't think it would have been would be.
Yeah. Someone rang me up.
So what we kind of recognize is that we've got sort of areas like the public toilets. We've got the cemetery, which is most important. And then also we've got play areas, um, so, and the Barnham Common. Um, so we've got areas that are operational out of hours. So there's always areas that are open and liable to have problems. Um, whether it be for the grazer on the common. Uh, the play areas, whether there be a safety concern, if a bit of equipment has become unusable and it's still there to be used. The, the member of the public can contact somebody and make them aware that we can get that sort of shut off and closed off. The public toilets, again, if they're not open or if there's a problem, leaking, um, pipe burst or something in there. Um, it's just making sure that in the eventuality of an emergency.
Yeah.
There is a contactable member of staff available.
Yeah. Long overdue.
Just to clarify, so we actually have one of your team member on call, like a rotor, where somebody's on call on every day until such something come, come up, because in case of emergencies only, not like a caretaker, caretaker that we had on hours, it's just literally.
It'll be on call, yeah.
Person who becomes active if something actually happens.
That's right. The hope would be that the phone wouldn't ring.
Yeah.
But if we have. Repeat, repeat at Christmas Day and the cemetery being.
Yeah.
Christmas Day. Um, you know, sometimes these things need to be dealt with straight away.
But what we've done is we've actually. Sorry, we proposed two things. One is that, that issue. So, so what would be is you're actually in a message on, on the emergency number. Someone will have the phone, be able to listen to the message, then have a response. So we'll have a response. Uh, you know, if there's.
Procedure.
Procedure, the toilet is blocked. What, what, who would you contact?
Yeah.
Uh, because we don't actually want to sit and someone says, you know, you know, my cat's stuck in a tree, can you, you know, you can help me or or someone's doing whatever the case may be. It really is just to listen to a message and we, it, this will be done at the more senior management team. We will then make a, a judgment call as to how do we respond to that. We'll have, we'll have, we'll have a listing. The second thing that, that the chair has talked about is make sure that our facilities are open. We're actually got another system to do that. So we're actually going to rotate. Uh, we're going to see if we can get up to ten staff members. So that's been for six weekends in a year. That someone will actually go around and check that the cemetery is open, check that the public toilets are open. Uh, just on a Saturday morning and a Sunday morning and on a public holiday. And even we don't, we aren't hoping to bring some certain services back in, in task. We still have to do that. Because if a staff member, for example, is ill, gets taken to hospital, the last thing they're going to do is, you know, oh, sorry, please don't operate on me, whatever the case may be. I've got a phone, you're going to go organize the, the public toilets. So we're going to put that in as a second measure. And that's just going to be, you go on a Saturday, a Sunday. We worked out last year. I think there was three occasions when, when, when the cemetery wasn't open. So it's not, this is not an onerous task. And if you haven't been told, you know, if you haven't been phoned by eight, nine o'clock in the morning, you know, you're not, that's it, you know. Or you'll go check and you can go check and treat eight o'clock at night. And then, and that'll be, you know, so, so we had a situation where I think it was a fathering Sunday, where, where one of our staff members actually drove past the cemetery and saw it was closed. And, and, and immediately went to open it. And we discovered that our contractors have forgotten to organize cover for someone being on, being on leave. So that's the second part of, of this after hours. We're just going to make sure that we, that we retain. So for example, um, you know, every time again, you can, you know, our market supervisor can take a walk up to the cemetery, you know, we're expecting it every Saturday morning, she can just check, you know, for example, that the cemetery's open. And we'll put it, we'll accept we get ten or eleven staff members doing that. It's, it's not an onerous task over, over a period of time.
Okay.
We're also just going to foolproof as well, aren't we, Alan, with an upgrade of the telephone lines in the office eventually? So there will be an option on there to contact the out of hours emergency. Um, so, so a lot of people would go direct to the main council office and obviously they, you know, responded with this office is closed. But that's how good when there's an emergency and something's really, you know, serious. So there will be that sort of foolproof on that system as well.
And I'm going to read this statement now. It comes under community engagement, but um I felt quite strongly that the council should be apologizing for the disruption on Christmas Day and over the festive period. Um, it wasn't our fault as a council, it was our contractor's fault, but by default, it's our fault. Um, so I'm just going to read you this statement, um, which the team have produced that can go on our social media. Uh, and I've changed it around a little bit, sorry. Um, and it says, the town council would like to apologize to all residents and visitors that were inconvenienced on Christmas Day and on Thursday, the twenty eighth of December, when the cemetery was not opened on time. We understand the importance of people being able to visit, uh, to pay their respects to loved ones, especially around the Christmas season. We had arrangements with our contractors to open and close the cemetery over the entire festive period and were given assurances that they would undertake this responsibly and provide the necessary staff. Unfortunately, this, they did not always fulfill their obligations. As a result, our contractor has waived their charges for all of the work they've done over the festive period and the new year period. Not just the two days that they failed to undertake their responsibilities. Moving forward, the council will be implementing more robust procedures to prevent this from occurring in the future. These changes include a monitored uh, email system block and telephone system. And the cemetery and public toilets will be checked by designated team member to see that they are open on all weekends and bank holidays, as Nick has just referred to. Signage at council owned facilities will be updated during the month of January to enable these procedures to be implemented. This would include further information regarding the contact details as well as a system that allows residents to give feedback on facilities via a QR code. These details would also be listed on the town council website. And, and that last point, just to be clear, is um, there's currently no process for members of the public to give feedback on the cleanliness or the opening times of the toilets or the cleanliness and the opening times of the cemetery. Um, so it's going to be built into this QR code that people can give feedback, which I think can be really useful. We can track when there are issues. But um, I was quite keen for us to uh, agree to that statement today. Um, just so that we can be clear on the council's position. Happy?
Yep.
Yes, perfectly. Good. Uh, I assume we are, but just for clarity, are we happy to uh, approve the new process for out of hours?
Yes.
Yep.
And it'll just be subject to finding some personnel at age level consultation as to how to be actually incorporate that into our operating procedures from starting.
Yeah. Uh, item five, six, one, request to hold two separate events on Barnham Cross Common. Uh, we had a request from BFER at the December meeting for a particular event, and this one uh, is for an event on the sixteenth of February and the eleventh of March. Uh, they were circulated prior to the meeting. Um, we waived the fees at the last meeting. Usual conditions about risk assessments and insurance, but are the committee happy to uh, approve consent and waive the fees? Yeah. You happy to, you know, make sure to propose and secondary doodads? What does our policy require?
I did have a look to see what forest bathing was.
Yes, we had that one.
No, we didn't just.
We do need. Uh, can I have a proposer to waive the fees, Chris? And seconder, Mac?
Yeah, we're doing this.
Make sure we cross the I's and dot the K's. Health and safety matters, to update the committee on any health and safety matters that have arisen since the last meeting. None, none?
I do have something.
Oh, no.
What you got?
Uh, the recent floods. The town concerned, a little lad was cadling in the water. And no one could see where the edge of the river was.
All right.
So do we have any signs that we could put in flood do not enter? Just to, because surely if something happened on spring walks and someone went into river, we'd be in front of it, you know.
It's in temporary signage each time it floods.
Signs with these parents.
So.
Well, I know that, but I mean, we're just talking, you know.
We, we looked at this for a long time with the stag and the, the river group.
Yeah.
And actually, there is, there is no legislation that tells you what you must and must not have at the edge of a river. So you can go to one place and it would be all railings and there'll be life belts, you know, and people ready to dive in at a moment's notice. Anywhere else, there's nothing. And we're kind of somewhere in between. We've got a couple of light brings and some railings. But there is nothing. There isn't a national waterways authority that says you must have this and comply with it in a go up area.
No, there's no guideline. I think different councils will do it differently according to whatever they perceive to be a risk or whatever they perceive to be more aesthetically. Suitable for the area, whatever operator you know, maybe.
I think about cars as well. I mean, when the water was across the road down the spring road. I mean, surely we not have a sign that says flood?
Yeah.
It's highways, they're sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this, this is a highways issue and it happens every year and they do nothing.
It's going to get more and more.
A lot of the places have the, the signs and they just clip over when that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I thought, I saw some various things.
Yeah, I thought, the obvious danger, you don't play in floodwater, you know, is regardless of where it is, you don't know what's in it. Um, I think it's something we can maybe look at through the town council's social media about advice around floodwater. Um, but if we set a precedent to start going out, but temporary signs up. There's no guarantee when it was done.
No.
Not guaranteed they'll be there when it happens.
That's true.
And as you say, around the sort of social media safety around water, that kind of thing.
Is important.
Some babies.
Don't drive through floodwater. I mean, there, a lot of the issues with people flooding is a result of people driving through floodwater and pushing, you know, creating the waves.
They're doing that, that down the school lane, pushing the, the water into people's houses.
Yeah.
I thought it was great.
Yeah, happens all the way.
That's one quick one.
So no tips?
Yeah.
That's one quickly, the marketplace doesn't cover it maybe.
No.
There's a big hole nearby Wetherspoons. It's dangerous. Outside Wetherspoons and the fatigued area is a hole up here, the slab is missing. Someone who went in it today and I'll tell them.
Well, Nick is scribbling away regardless.
Okay.
It'll join the slabs that have disappeared from Button Island around the. I look awful now. I'll tell you when it's underwater, so it's not so bad.
Now, must try that, Chris. Um, correspondence, any correspondence to note?
Say one correspondence. Uh, so officers recently received a complaint uh, from a local business regarding the used cable ties being left across the paved areas of King Street following the taking down of the Christmas sites displays. Twenty three by our contractor. Uh, the contractors had been working out of hours through the night and have sadly not completed the task with the following up and cleaning of these, uh, following their works, uh, and these were left across the pavements. The town team quickly responded on receiving the update of the situation and picked and cleared the areas. An email correspondence was sent to the managing director of the council's contractor. As this had already been highlighted and discussed frequently, following previous works being carried out by them. Contractor has apologized and they have spoken to their teams to discuss the matter further. And agreeing that following the rest of the takedown of the works, the Christmas uh, displays, these will be cleared and public areas will be left tidy.
Okay, Carla?
Fortunately, the, the message that comes across to me today is that when it comes to contract matters, whether it's the provision of cemetery, the toilets, the cleaning and of the high street, there's been failures across different sections when it comes to contracts. We're obviously very clearly liable of, of, for their failings as we tend to be the ones through tendering that pick up the contractor to serve us. So we are liable to the, to the people, ultimately whether or not they perform. Which puts them in a difficult position. The Christmas situation with cemetery was one of them. I think this is something we have to take in consideration. Be more cautious than the, the time is to pick the contractor. When it's time for people to tend, when choose the, whether choosing the tender, the tendering, whoever is, is suited for the job. We have sometimes maybe to be more cautious about, um, you know, either the references or proof of, uh, proof of work. Um, be more, pay more attention to whether or not they are suited when they have the capability to do the job. Alongside obviously the, the cost, which is one of the main issues with tendering all the time. But yeah, we have to be more more assertive in, in the quality of the provision of the service we're going to get, because this is, seems to be failing in different sections across different contractors for different provisions. And this is a recurrent issue.
Completely agree. Um, uh, I would suggest as well that when we write our contracts, that we uh, include financial penalties where possible, because.
We might have to.
Very grateful for the team, you know, going along and doing what the contractor should be doing, but you're now not doing something else.
Yeah, without doing double the cost and double the work, it's just more working out.
So uh, if it had been a one off, then fair enough, you'd already made them aware of it.
Yes.
I'm less generous. But no, I completely agree, Carla, and we'll bear that in mind, I think. The, the problem is with a lot of these jobs is there are very few contractors anyway. So it's not like we're spoiling the choice.
I know.
But I think that particular contractor is coming up for renewal. It's, so they, they want to be nice to us. Right, correspondence. But no, thank you for bringing that up and thank you for dealing with it. That's good news. Um, there are still some lights to go, I know.
Yeah.
Moving on, five, six, four, action points since the last meeting. Okay, so just rattle through the list that we can take off. Letter to be written to the environment agency about groundwater monitoring. Contact now made with the environment agency. Is there any update on any of that monitoring stuff and that?
No, we have to. No, we have to go through the planning applications and so I've got, I've done that with the planning applications, but I have to, I have to really study them and, uh, see what they actually say. What, what, it's, it is what the by relationship said, it's check your planning applications, uh, because if we have to, to look at your reports, it's a fortune. If it's a planning condition, the, the, the only that's imposed the planning condition will actually have to pay for that. So we just at that stage, but there's about four or five planning, uh, uh, conditions to go through, but I have to admit it's quite difficult to, to understand.
Yeah, that's fine, uh, I'll leave it on that for now. Um, two, one, three, a check presentation for Fettford Cricket Club has been done. And you would have seen hopefully the publicity about that, which is good news. Uh, town team manager to contact Norfolk County Council and Fettford Academy regarding the Croxton Road underpass.
Yeah, so still work in progress, um, unfortunately they're still awaiting for their new financial year budget to decide, uh, Norfolk County Council, what they're going to do with the underpasses going forward. Um, so hopefully, um, within the next couple of months, we should have an update.
Okay. Burial administrator to provide comparative fees, which has been done, so we'll take that one off. Uh, officers to investigate any other options identified in the discussions relating to the renewal of the council fleet, that's still work in progress. Town team manager to investigate the land ownership and the suitability of a bin for Fettford Grammar School.
Yeah, so I'm still working alongside Norfolk and highways on that one.
Councillor Mapdon to provide a list of bell ringers to the committee officers.
Done that, um, and I've given it to David and he must get back in touch with the bell ringer because they are ringing me all the time. Hasn't you phoned me? Hey! Yes, uh, th- they're offering to, you know, become the tower captain, which is something we used to have and look after it for us and do all that kind of stuff, which is useful.
But that was a default.
Yeah.
You had to be.
Yeah, of course.
I think there's a telephone grammar, sorry.
Uh, schedule a review of the cemetery rules, so that comes under the governance discussion. Twenty twenty four, five, June, okay.
That's two, six, nine, three, yeah.
Okay.
Governance should be.
So that'd be for the first of July, committee meeting.
Yeah.
First of July. Uh, the chair of amenities committee to write to Norfolk County Council to request that future maintenance be performed, that has been done and we need to send a copy of that to committee. The chair, uh, mentions to write to Historic England regarding the consent to prepare blah, 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 uh, I haven't done that, I need to do that one. Town team manager to liaise with councillor Wo, uh, councillor Cambridge and Ian Woodward to develop a wildflower meadow action plan before March twenty twenty four. So that one progressed at all yet?
So I'm going to be in contact with, uh, Ian shortly because we are going to be looking at the Creeper Marsh Wharton bits and pieces around, yeah, so we'll be working on that one.
Can I change March to, uh, before first of March twenty twenty four? So that it comes to the March committee meeting, if otherwise we're getting too late into the year for it to be implemented. Committee officer to contact Cloverfield Community Church regarding the resubmission of their small grant application. Done, a new application received on the fifth of January will be tabled at February's amenities meeting. Yep. Officers to submit application on behalf of the Community Orchards Grant. Um, so after investigation suitable land, it was decided that would not be possible to submit a grant. Officers confirmed with the chairman, which I was happy with, so that's just to note that. Publicize the town teams' work during December on social media, that was done and the communication officer has already sent a press release regarding the erection of the Christmas tree in the cemetery, so that has been done as well. Any other questions or comments on any of the action points? No, so good number there.
Chopped off.
Few. Community engagement, so we've agreed the statement earlier, any other community engagement that people would like to request from anything this evening? No, committee officers update, anything else not raised, Nick?
Yeah, so just got one, so, uh, officers recently applied for the one million trees for Norfolk project, uh, funding, uh, which was open to local councils, schools and communities. To apply for a funding bursary to see the replanting of one million trees across county. This project is being supported and funded by Norfolk Fussies Car Dealership, running in partnership with Norfolk County Council. We initially submitted and applied for the replacement of lost trees at two locations where we have sadly lost trees previously. These locations are both at the London Road Cemetery and the Barnham Cross Common Car Park, where existing trees have sadly, sadly not survived where previously planted and are in desperate need to replace them. An application was sent in and I'm now pleased to update that we have just been approved for a grant of a thousand pounds, which will cover the cost of around eighteen new trees being replanted here in Fettford. The feedback from the board members on the application felt that great consideration had been taken in writing for the bid to benefit the local community with a great choice of heritage varieties being looked at for the planting and reintroduction to these locations. We will now start to look at working alongside the local community and local schools to ask if we can have some help in planting these alongside our conservation volunteers and town team at the different locations.
Brilliant, really good news.
That's a good community engagement.
Yeah.
All right. That's a good community engagement.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sure, well, once, um, I assume the, uh, um, the funding pot will want to do some publicity themselves, so we can make sure we tie in with that. Hmm, good. Uh, anything, Alan, from you?
Yeah, no.
Brilliant, thank you all very much.